I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Okay, Brennaman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
And Jones.
Here.
Mayor Manning is absent with notice.
I'd like to have a motion for the agenda with one, the specialty band application for Buffalo Ridge is being strictly from the agenda, so if somebody could give me a motion with that being one change.
They requested it to be withdrawn. Their, all their activities are going to be within side of their building now. They don't need any street closures.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No bills or what did you, this is other?
That's just, hey, I did pay money.
All right.
So no bills, no.
We'll move on to public comments. I know one, Gary Meyer, wants to talk to us about the wastewater treatment plant.
Do you want to quickly approve the minutes though?
Oh, can we, I thought we did that? Oh, I'm just jumping right over.
I know, you're just.
Can we get a motion to approve the minutes from the 10:19 meeting? Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or staying? All right, Gary?
I came to address the council about the wastewater treatment plant. I feel like I'm behind the ball here, but because none of your neighbors to the east were notified or let known about this wastewater treatment plant that was, that is being planned for our front yards, I don't know if I'm, I feel like I'm already too late, but I want to say that I always felt that we were neighbors to Hartford out there and Hartford felt us as neighbors. I no longer feel that way. Hartford wants us, but they only want us when it's good for Hartford. The reason I feel that way is because Hartford secretly or behind closed doors went out and purchased land out east of Hartford and then they secretly annexed it into the city limits for the sole purpose of putting a wastewater treatment plant out there. Normally when somebody goes in in our neighborhood out there, something comes in, the county sends people within a certain range, miles of population, a notice of when there's a meeting to approve these kinds of things. And we can come to that meeting and voice our opinion, ask questions, or because the city of Hartford went behind everybody's back and annexed it in, the county is no longer required to notify us. So the only way we found out was through word of mouth. And the other reason I don't feel very much like were your neighbor anymore is you're dumping that sewer behind the biggest berm you could find, the interstate. Nobody from Hartford is going to be able to see this thing because you're putting it behind the interstate. And then I was told last time, no, they'll make it look nice without this nice berm of trees and bushes we're going to plant. Well, if you look at the plans and you look at page 91 in that book, if you want to be specific, there's a nice hedge of trees between the interstate and the plant, between the Hartford and plant. There's nothing between the residence and the plant. I guess you don't care if we all have to look at it. And the other thing is you picked Plan 2B and you're all aware what that is. I won't go into it. So I looked in your specification sheet and conveniently there is no plan at the current site to compare cost to. The only plan is to redo the ponds that are there. That was as close a comparison that I can. So I couldn't find a cost comparison to do it at the new site versus the old site. And regarding the figures, I hope you're all comfortable with ISG's figures. One, a document was handed out at the last meeting, which you didn't make available to the public, but they did a cost comparison 20 years out and there's a $16 million, 322 difference between doing it yourselves and hooking up with Sioux Falls. That's over $800,000 a year average. Are you telling me that Sioux Falls, a city of 200,000, you can do it cheaper with 3,000 people versus a city of 200,000? That figure seemed a little bit odd to me. Currently Sioux Falls has a 21 million gallon per day capacity with expansion to 30 million gallons a day. Hartford's current projection is for, for option 2B is one and a half million and that's up from your current half a million gallons per day. So you're talking 1.15 million gallons versus the city of Sioux Falls at 30 million gallons a day. They can easily handle what you've got and they built it with that in mind. And you on Minnehaha County, you've requested Minnehaha County to spend $12 million in infrastructure to get these five cities, Lyons, Humboldt, Crooks, Colton, and Wayne Township to help build the infrastructure to come to Hartford. With, they have got $37 million of ARPA money and you've asked for $12 million of that. Now, there's restrictions on how they can spend this money and you talked about that at the last meeting. Well, the Senate met this last week and I don't know if it's actually Senate or a Senate Oversight Committee, but they greatly reduced these restrictions. And I know Sioux Falls City Council is meeting tonight as we speak and one thing on their agenda is to discuss other projects that they may want to do more with this money. So for you to count on that money, I think is slim pickings.
You say Sioux Falls or counties meeting?
Excuse me, the county. Thank you. The county, the county commissioners. They are not as interested in allocating the 12 million to build the infrastructure. Second, none of the other communities that you looked at, they all interested to hear what you got to say, but none of those communities are at any point close to having to be ready to hook up with you. The city of Crooks, they're still in compliance and they can add another pond if they need to. So they're a lot of years out. And, and that also says that in your specification book. If you look on pages 124, 125, 126, and 127, every one of those communities in there has stated that they are currently in compliance and are not ready to hook up with anybody else. And Hartford, a city of 3,200, again compared with Sioux Falls, and you have Humboldt, 686 people, Colton, 726, Lyons, 629, Crooks, 1279. Those four added together are about the same size as Hartford and yet those four together would have to spend eight and a half million just to get to Hartford and that's not including the fees that you would charge them. And on page 124 of the manual, it says if Colton were to come, they would go seven and a half miles to Lyons, then they would swing over to Crooks before they came to Hartford. Well, I did some calculating, Crooks is only five miles from Foundation Park. Hartford is seven miles from Crooks. So why would they come to Hartford when they can go to Sioux Falls? And I can hardly believe that you guys could offer Crooks a better deal on your plant than Sioux Falls could, being the size that they are. And I also took into account that model, said the Crooks plant are currently at one mile west of Crooks. So if they don't have to go west, they can just ship it right from Crooks. That puts them four miles from Foundation Park and eight miles to Hartford. And I'm wondering, have you let the Hartford residents know that they can expect an 82% increase in their water bill? That's listed on page six of the manual. And I think that's a pretty conservative figure. Again, I haven't had time to check out these figures. I've only known about this for a month, but I'm assuming you all are well aware and you've digested this.
So is it possible that these figures that you're sharing aren't actual or factual? Because you haven't had time to process them all?
They're actual according to that binder I got. The Hartford feasibility study, I pulled them right out of there.
Okay.
All the figures that I'm quoting are out of there and that's why I've got page numbers to back it up.
Perfect.
Harrisburg built their own plant and their rates are very, very high. I checked with several people I know at Harrisburg and confirmed that. I don't have figures for that. I just know they're very high. And you told me there would be 270 tons of sludge per year. Now that is at the current usage. Under the 2B option, that number would be closer to 800 tons. And you, it's more than obvious, you have not addressed how you're going to get that sludge from point A to point B. The closest route is over a township gravel road, which several of us out there live on. And when I asked you that last week, you said that's not your responsibility. That's the township's responsibility. That frustrates me.
Because if I. I'm going to address that before we just let him ramble on.
Yeah, okay.
This is a little bit absurd.
No, it is not absurd.
It is, considering the fact that our property doesn't go to the township road.
No, it doesn't.
So how, why would we drive one?
Because it's the shortest route.
It's not a truck route.
We got.
It's not a truck route.
We have semis go by there.
And we contract those people to haul our, our waste. Our contract will clearly state they can't take the township road. Does that solve the problem?
Will it? That'll solve the problem.
It can clearly state it.
If you, if you state it in there.
Why don't we let them pound the heck out of your township road? That's not being a very good neighbor.
Because there's lots of people that are doing it already.
Are they contracted with the city of Hartford?
No.
There's my point. We're going to be your best neighbor out there. Whatever beef you have with your neighbors out there now, you actually will have a voice with the city of Hartford. Those are all private companies.
I asked this question last time and you said that was the township's problem. That was beyond your jurisdiction.
The township's maintenance of their road is the township's problem.
But there was no mention.
Hartford pounding down your road with city waste, so to speak, is our problem.
Okay.
I'm sure we will address it.
You will address it, but you haven't. That's why I bring it up. Now, I don't think you would have.
There's point always down the road when you're worried about the township getting beat to death for a plant that hasn't been built yet.
I can't wait till after the plants are built to address it. The gravel pit went in and then we tried to address it. That's too late. That's my point. That's my point being, I don't feel like a very good neighbor.
But this council can't address it anyway because that would be a different council. I mean, realistically, when, if and when that plant gets built, there could very likely, none of us could be sitting here and you'll be having that discussion about a township road with.
Exactly.
Six or seven different people.
And that's another issue I have. You guys can make this decision and I'll be up here three years from now. Probably you'll all notice that and they'll be pointing their fingers at the last council. The county points their finger at the township. The township points their finger at the state. That's a problem we have. Nobody addresses this stuff till it's a problem. I'm, I'm asked, I'm telling you, I've found some problems in here that I feel like we have been completely ignored out there. None of you even knew where I lived at the last meeting. That tells me you didn't really take a look at who's out there. And the plans show you got trees between Hartford and the plant, but you have nothing between us and the plant. We'll look at that plant every time we leave our place. So that's my point. I'm trying to drive home a point here.
Okay, Gary, I'm going to give you about another five minutes. That's it.
I've got 10 minutes. And you got an approval from the state to go out on Highway 38, right at the Interstate 90 exit. Has that approval been made? Because when we put the gravel pit in out there, that was contentious, that was contentious because there is a limited site distance there coming underneath that bridge. Have you got approval? Because if you had them, that means it will end up coming out on 466 Street and that means that the trucks will be hauling on 466 Avenue. So have you got approval?
They've already got the access. It's the exact same lineup that there's always, already a driveway.
So you're saying? Is there a driveway there?
Yes.
There's no driveway there.
On 38.
Highway 38. Okay, I will look. I will contest that. I have never seen a driveway.
I would, I'd like to, you want a response in regards to the city numbers? Did you review what was provided?
Yes, I did.
Because in all legality, the numbers that were divided by the city of Sioux Falls were provided by the city of Sioux Falls. We discussed all of that analysis. They made that comparison. Those numbers were provided by the city of Sioux Falls.
Okay, whoever they're provided by, you're saying there's a, a $16 million difference?
That's based on the growth rate by the city of Hartford, which is a 5% projection, which every single time anyone builds that home, remember we discussed that, it's a $2,500 offshoot. If you have that 5% projection, absolutely.
Okay, well, I'm asking the council. You better be prepared if you're wrong. Okay, I will look for that, I will look for that exit on the, on the Highway 38. I have never seen one.
Never.
I have never seen one built. And how about these cost estimates? When did you put these cost estimates together? Have you taken into account the last year COVID prices have driven up construction costs by 20 to 30%? Is that built in?
No, we did, we did not put our head in the sand. Yes, we are bidding projects today. We bid projects yesterday. We're updating all of our analysis and ARAMOD numbers. We said that they actually went down. We didn't actually adjust them. We also then went ahead when we're applying for these funds that we're talking about with the SRF funds, we put another 13% contingency on it so that if there's additional price increases in the next six months to 12 months when we're going through this bid process, that we're still going to have that allocation of funds.
But anybody building a house these days knows that if they did it a year ago, it'd be 20 to 30% cheaper.
We're using today's numbers today and we're putting additional 20% contingency on top of that, on all of our numbers. And then we're putting a 13% inflation increase as well because we don't know the volatility in the next year.
Okay, you all are comfortable with this, that the COVID prices have been factored in? Just asking.
We're not comfortable staying with the ponds that are currently in violation or destroying their compliance.
I realize that. I realize that. I'm getting to my point here. How about, and I asked you at the last meeting about what happens in, for catastrophes, disasters, and you assured me you got that taken care of. Have you considered interstate traffic disasters? I know of two accidents in my lifetime. There was a semi truck that lost control or went to sleep. He went and medevaced and came down through the bridges on the Highway 38. That's right at the end of your property. There was another RV that was pulling a trailer with a car. The trailer came unhooked and the car ended up in that creek that you're going to be dumping your discharge into, again, on the other end of your property. So in my lifetime, there's two accidents that could have very well.
That discharge is in compliance. It's not toxic.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that could have just as easily went off and ran into your plant. A semi running into your plant. I know you've got backups. You've got two separate units. Making my point.
Acts of God. You want us to, you want us to prepare for acts of God?
Yeah, I do.
All right.
And I, and I have a reason for this.
Sure.
And I don't know what you paid for the land, but I'm assuming it was two to three times what it was worth because you traded it two for one acres.
We paid COVID prices for it.
What's that?
We paid COVID prices for it.
COVID?
COVID. We paid COVID prices for it. Based on your, you know, the, the numbers you've just shared with us, everything's gotten more expensive. We paid COVID prices for that, right?
The COVID land prices were pretty high. And so my point is, if you went to Sioux Falls, you could reduce the price of that, the price of the cost of running that pipe by the price of that land, which I'm sure is a pretty hefty amount. That would make a pretty good down payment on the line of Sioux Falls. And you also cited.
That's, I'm surprised you don't have that number because that's all public information.
I just came on board a month ago because I was not notified.
Well, yeah, but that, that number's a lot easier to find than.
Well, do you have that number?
What's that?
Do you have that number?
I do.
Can you tell me?
I could.
But you won't?
That's probably could. It's not a taxpayer mark. That's a courtesy call.
Charge me for it. You also cited the cost of 1.3 million to recoup your current ponds. Well, I think that, that is a misleading number because once you recoup those, that ponds, that land is going to be worth more than 1.3 million in industrial development. So you're going to recoup that cost from that. So to me, that should be considered a cost of this plant because you're going to recoup that cost. And also Sioux Falls, the cost that Sioux Falls gave you, I believe those did not include you having your own retention pond. If you were to build your own retention pond, Sioux Falls would give you a pretty healthy break because that way in an emergency, you could have a place to dump your sewage for one to three weeks. I'm not sure what the stipulation is, but that would reduce your cost and the cost of you, that retention pond would be minimal because there's, there's nothing to it. Once it's built, it sits there. All you got to do is make sure it's available. And Sioux Falls, I don't know if you had a discussion with them. I did. And if you weren't concerned about extra lift stations for Hartford, well, on page 127 of your manual, it says if Wayne Township connects up and they decide that the households in Wayne Township need to hook up, every household will be required to install a lift station to connect to the pipeline. So now we all got to install our own and yet you guys are worried about installing one for a whole group. And I'll conclude here. You sent, you sent a major benefit to wastewater regionalization and there's five bullet points. The first bullet point is with one active wastewater discharge point on the Stunt Creek, there is a significantly reduced risk of upset events. I would agree. Sioux Falls is a regional wastewater facility. Why do we want to make another one? And Harrisburg make another one? Everybody makes another one. It's my point. I think you should consider Sioux Falls more heavily than you are. The second one is rather than each community pursuing funds to upgrade or construct their own wastewater facility, one state of the art regional system would be the best long-term option for all taxpayers. And this is quoted directly from ISG. They agree, one regional plant would be better. Sioux Falls has got up to a 30 million gallon a day plant ready to build. The next one is most small communities struggle to recruit, retrain, and support wastewater operators. It's my understanding that at least, lead at least two at 120,000 to 150,000 a year salary to, to sustain this. I'm assuming that's in your cost. I was unable to determine that. The fourth bulletin, facilities that can capture and reuse water will reduce the strain on existing water resources. Now unless you're planning on pumping that sewer water back into the swimming pool with the Gulf Coast irrigation system, I'd love to hear what you got planned to reduce our reliance on existing water systems. I don't know what that's talking about, but ISG talks that as a reason to build your own plant. And the fifth bulletin, it says Sioux Falls does not have a robust wastewater solution that can economically accommodate select value-added agricultural products, i.e. cheese plants. So you're telling me that Hartford is going to build their plant? Oh, let me, let me continue. Without a substantial pretreatment, equalization, or significantly expanding capacity. So you're telling me that you're planning that into your facility to make it big enough to accommodate an industrial such as a cheese plant so that they, they can pump that right to your station without having to hold a pond themselves? Because if you aren't, then that's a false statement or misleading statement.
All right, we got to wrap her up.
Okay.
You want, you got one concluding statement?
Yes, I think you ought to reconsider and go to Sioux Falls. It's a regional plant. They built their plant with the idea of bringing in the region to do it. They've got the facilities. They've got the manpower. They've got the experience, the expertise. I don't know why you're thinking of building your own at 3,000 people. Your residents are going to be awfully upset when this, if this cost comes in way higher than projected. And these other communities, I've got one more.
You dial out certain numbers when they fit you and you dial down certain numbers when they fit you. I think we're at 3,600 people apparently.
Oh, I missed it by 300.
By 600.
That would really.
You just said 3,000.
Yeah, I would round you to 200,000. I don't have Sioux Falls' exact number either.
So what's your?
But this isn't for today. It's for the future, 20 years.
I've got one question for you, Gary. What do you do in your civilian life? What's your job?
Lawn care.
Lawn care. Okay. You've got a lot of time to think about this stuff.
No, I don't.
And I appreciate your input.
I don't have a lot of time to think about this.
You've spent a lot of time.
I have, I have. I have spent a lot of time and it frustrates me that I've had to spend my time doing this. But I feel like I have to question what I'm not sure you guys have questioned enough.
So Gary, real quick, just a quick question. Who did you speak with in the city of Sioux Falls office that you said you talked to?
I prefer not to say who I talked to. That's between me and them. I told them that I'm not, I was not speaking to them to come here and say so and so said this and so and so said that. That was not my point. My point was to gather information, not put somebody on the hot seat. Why do you ask who I spoke to? Is there something in particular you questioned?
Well, no, I was curious because we've been working with Sioux Falls as well on this. It's not that we're just coming here saying, this is what Hartford wants to do. We've had a number of meetings with Sioux Falls, county commissioners and so forth. So it's not like we're just coming here going, we're going to build this and that's it. And it's not a bad thing or a good thing. It's, we're working as a team. We're being very collaborative with Sioux Falls, the county commission, and our city council and the citizens.
Okay, my apologies. That was not the impression I got at the last meeting here. I was under this understanding that Sioux Falls went on a tour, they stopped here, they met with a couple of you people and they gave you a price. Has Sioux Falls ever come out and presented to you information?
Yes.
In a public meeting?
Never.
No, not yet.
Probably for the same reasons that you can't share with us who you talked to.
That's fair.
All right. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public want to jump in? If not, we're going to move on. Applications, agreements, hearings, resolutions. First one up is public hearing for resolution 2021-12 for our SRF application.
Okay, so this resolution would allow us to submit an application for an SRF loan for the future wastewater treatment facility. And as you know, we discussed where we decided to go, scenario 2B. That cost estimate was about 14 and a half million, if you remember correctly. And like David pointed out tonight, they have figured, they have up the contingency of it and figured a price, as, as far as figuring a price acceleration allowance in it, that's almost another 2 million because we don't know what prices are going to do this year. We all know everything's gone up just like it was discussed in here. So that is why our application cost, well, the project cost went up to about 16 and a half and then our true application cost, as you can see on there, is a little above that and that's for bond counsel and CCOG fees. So that's where the extra money comes in and the difference. And this is just an application to apply for the loan. If hopefully costs don't come, you know, within a year when we're ready to build this, if costs are down, you know, we're only going to take out a loan for what we actually expense. So you know, it's not like we're getting it for this. It's, it's, I, you know, we had this discussion with our engineer last week. I just want to make sure we're prepared. The last thing I want to do is apply for a loan and for only 14 and a half and be short $2 million, you know. I, I don't want to be in that scenario. Then we've got a fair floor. We're going to come up with another 2 million. So that's why I did ask ISG and we talked about, you know, how prices are going. Maybe we need to put that price escalator in there. So that's why it's, you know, more than that 14 and a half million. But like I said, we will, we will only loan and draw down on that loan what we actually expense.
All right. Any discussion, motions, or questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
So how much money do we have on hand, serious cash on hand or different forms of financing this above and beyond 16, 17?
So our sewer fund doesn't have a lot of funds in it. We are anticipating, so we're looking at worst case scenario. We're anticipating loaning the whole thing. But hopefully when we go to the state, you know, hopefully they're grant money out there. There'll be some principal forgiveness, you know, and, you know, things that will reduce what we have to take out for a loan. And like I said, hopefully maybe bids won't be as bad as we think they're going to be. So that will all reduce it. We are not expecting to take anything from our sewer fund because our sewer fund, you know, we've had two projects in last year that have taken funds from that.
So I know, I know there's been the 1.9 million contingency put in to his addresses, but I still, I still think that number's low. I'm still not convinced that that number's right. I guess I have to address it now because I can't wait for your report, Dave. But at the last meeting, I asked you about the price difference between the Harrisburg plant and our plant. And you said Harrisburg was built out to 4 million. And that, that's true to a point. They're built out today to do a million and the buildings, the head unit, I mean, some of the stuff is built out. The alcohol pipe is built out to 4 million. So I guess my question is, is we're looking at 1.56, correct?
Yes.
From, from the jump?
Mm-hmm.
And that'd be daily?
Yes.
What is our build out? Where are we projected to build out day one when we put it in operation? How, how much are we built out?
Yeah. And we have, we have that. So we have the, the two big things. We have, we have about three, I mean, similar to what they have, but we do have the potential that we can go to that, that 3.5 with just the building itself and, and headworks and things where we can add those pumps. And we have priced that out. And that's, that, from, from that perspective, we're still priced at that 14.6. This additional 1.9 contingency is above and beyond that. And that's pricing today.
So we're going to, so we're going to build at 1.5. We're going to be built out to 3.5. And you, and you think you can get that done for 14 with 1.9 contingency? Where a year and a half or two years ago, Harrisburg built a 1 MG, built out to a 4 to the tuna 16 and change. So that's, that's what I, I can't wrap my brain around how a year or two ago, Harrisburg built a smaller plant with a $4 million build out or a Harrisburg built a smaller plant with a $4 million build-out or a 4 MGD build-out. And we're, we're going to be two, three years down the road and we're building a plant day one that's going to be 50% bigger, projected to be the same price with just a, just a slightly smaller build-out.
They're, they're doing quite a few different things too. I mean, that's what, and originally you can add into this as well. The, the way that they've laid that out and the, the way that they're having to pump. So they're pumping actually, their ability, if you looked in their end, their, the end of their plant, they're pumping all the way to the river, right? And I know they've isolated some of those costs. They haven't isolated all of those costs by any means out of that 16. And we had that discussion with them as well. They also have the ability that they're pumping from the back end of their plant to the front end of their plant, just the way their site lays out. So what we have to look at is every independent site isn't going to cost the same. You're going to look at every one of them and you're going to have to price them differently than, than the other one. Depending on how your outfall line works, how your influence comes in, that's, it's all separate and all a separate design. So I don't think you can compare them apples to apples. It's really what we're looking at there. And there's quite a few of those particular items on that particular design that we said, why, why do we have this whole other area of this facility? And they're saying, well, the way we lay this out, we're going to have to pump all the way back up to that. And we're saying, we're not, we're not going to do that. We don't have to, just to the particular location that we're at.
Gary Mark, any other questions? Mark?
I don't know. It's just, and I'm not, I'm not going to fight with you, Dave. It's just, like I said, it's hard for me to wrap my brain around.
Yeah, I get it. No.
Because I mean, you know, Harrisburg, just, just to dumb it down, Harrisburg bought a new truck two years ago for 16,000 bucks. And you're telling us we're going to get a bigger, better truck this year for 14.5? And it just doesn't make sense in my head. So I mean, with the economy and the cost, everything else.
I get, I get that. And I, I think even when we were finalizing the numbers and reevaluating and checking all of the numbers and going through that analysis, I, I think we, I think we all looked at that in that same fashion. And I think that's why we've reached out to, to all of the suppliers and all of the various pieces of equipment. And there's, a lot of this is coming from about, you know, four suppliers that you can really confirm this information from. So I mean, I think, I think you have to look at the sites differently from one to another. I think that's a, that's a big key element to it. And what the value is of where your site, sites, a good location. And I don't think there was anything wrong with that selection. I think that helps, helps us to the tune of probably a couple million bucks to begin with. And I think the other thing is, I mean, when we, when we're pricing that, we're pricing that. And I'm, I'm telling you, the 410 six number, we, we think we have better air mod pricing today. But we're also sitting there saying, hey, we understand when you're asking a request to the state for funding, right? You want to be high because we know that it's a heck of a lot easier to be on that end of the spectrum than the other spectrum.
Well, and that's, that's my, that's my concern is because, I mean, that's a big, that's a big number. But like I said, I'm sitting here right now and I don't, I'm, I'm not convinced that number's big enough. So I, I just like the minutes to reflect that I have concerns that I think these, these numbers are low. But, and I guess someday we'll find out.
Read the motion and put that in a minute. All right. Any more discussion or do I have any motions on this?
So dumb question. What's, what's the harm in making that number bigger? If, if you, if you can borrow it and not use it?
You know, when you go to the, I don't know if there's any harm. I mean, when you go to the state, you're the, you know, an aspirer, you're SRF. I mean, you're going to want to be able to reasonably justify. You don't want to ask for pie in the sky. Because they're going to go, you overplayed it.
So that's the harmony you have to justify with that.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, they're going to look at, you know, all our financials. They're going to look at the project, at the costs. And like I said, we already have an accelerator in there. Like I said, you're going to have to justify it to them, you know, so.
So while we're on topic, what's the, what's the harm in scaling it back to a, to a 1 million a day from the get-go with a build-out of 3.5? What's, what's the benefit?
No, I think we can. I mean, I think then when we were doing the, that sizing and that went into all those criteria of the different scenarios. And, and what we are allocating, remember, we're allocating that growth to the 5% per year and we're allocating an additional 1 MGD. And that's undetermined economic development and 1 MGD. So could we scale that back? Absolutely. And that was option one. Hartford only just that growth. And that's what we talked about when we talked about scenario one, scenario two, scenario three, scenario four.
But that can be adjusted on the fly, right?
Absolutely. Yep.
It's also good is that we designed the headworks, the collection system, everything like that is all designed for full build-out. So.
Yeah, 3.5.
Yep, they're, they're going to, they're going to design all of that in full build-out. The crossing, the interstate, all of that will be designed for full build-out.
All right. One more time. Anything else? Any motions or further questions or discussion? Make a motion to approve resolution 2021-12.
Second.
And a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Not will vote. Keel?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. All right. Next up, second reading of order at 7:19. Franchise agreement between the city of Hartford and McConliff Communication. No changes since the first reading?
Nope, there have been no changes to it. It's same as what we talked about in our last meeting.
Make a motion to approve second reading.
All second.
Any discussion? Not will vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Brennan?
Yes.
Randall?
Yep.
O'Hair?
Yes.
Keel?
No standing.
And I'm a yes. All right. We'll move on to reports. Deputy Curtis?
Hello, everyone. Sorry for being a tad late there. Just in time, yes. All right. Third day wrap-up of October, October 1. Had about the same, well, we did have the same call for services from last month. It was 235 calls for service. During that time, we had 61 traffic stops, which resulted in 11 applications, 27 rear warnings, and 15 verbal warnings. Also during that time, we had zero DWI's, three family disputes. With the suspicious activity, we had, we had not only just combining the vehicle and just activity in general. So the subjects, we had eight traffic accidents, we had five larcenies. We had two, which was the same from last month. And then during that time, we had nine case reports done, which was a decrease of eight. And three arrests were made, which was a decrease of five. I don't know if the trunk-or-treat event was discussed or not, but we had pretty good time out there. We had our own trunk out there and served a bunch of candy. It was lovely fun. Next community policing event that's coming up, it's going to be November 16th at the stopping grounds. So a coffee with a cow from 7:00 AM to 8:30 in the morning. So if you guys have nothing going on while we're public, come on by for a cup of coffee and a conversation. And then it's not on my report, but I'm working with the schools lately to come up with a crosswalk patrol at the elementary school. So partnering with the high school, middle school, and elementary school to kind of come up with some sort of crosswalk patrol over at the intersection of Second and Fader. And right there on Second Street near Eastern Avenue, there's a little crosswalk there. So just formed up with the community with the school and things are kind of rocking and rolling there. So pretty good. So any questions from the council?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, deputy. Chamber of Economic Development, Amy Farr.
Thank you. My information is in the packet. I do want to touch on a few things. Deputy Sheriff Curtis stated we did have our trunk-or-treat. We do believe we had over 600 trick-or-treaters. There was about 25 trunks to, to go through. It was kind of chilly for those that were there, but I think everyone had a great time. Beetlejuice was there, Frankenstein, we had Candy Cane Lane. Flo made an appearance from Progressive. We won't talk about her. But I think all in all, it was a really good time for everyone that attended. So the Chamber folks were very happy with their event there. And then they will host their annual meeting next Monday night. So that is also in your packet. It'll be over at Buffalo Ridge Brewing. And then for the Hartford Development Foundation, I want to touch on the community development plan open house. We had a great turnout. We had about 80 participants. And after that, we did get more information from Danielle Squared. They gave us a link for an online survey. So Gary, if that's something you would like to also take a look at, it's on our Facebook page, both at the Chamber and the Development Foundation Facebook pages. Feel free to go on there and see kind of what the community plan is there and anyone else here as well. We've had some really great feedback. I think it went really well. I believe we're in one more week. It was up for two weeks, so one more week for that. And then the Development Foundation Annual Meeting will be next Tuesday at Central Valley. We had a little late notice getting it out because it was pending our speaker. We still haven't heard for sure if that individual will be able to make it. So that's why the late notice on that. But we're still hoping that we'll hear by tomorrow and then we could announce. And then Envision 2025 meeting will be here at City Hall on Wednesday. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Amy? None. Thank you very much. Engineer report, David.
Thank you. CIP update, great study are both underway. Some of that's coming, coming together, especially the write-ups. Water tower painting is still on hold for a few months now. Western Avenue Interchange are working on a concept there and putting some time to that. On project updates, Western Meadows Phase 5, first lift of asphalt is in. If you've gotten to see that, that looks pretty darn good. There's a couple items on that we do need, I think they got a little bit confused on the manhole in the spot. I think they adjusted other ones, but not the ones that we wanted them to. But we'll, we'll get that done so that Craig's not getting his head rocked and slammed into the, those in the winter. Naps landing phase one and two, we've got Punchless Turtle Creek as well. And then Western Meadows Phase 4. I think really all they have is seating, right? Okay, that's cool. And Vance Ferguson, we did have a letter requesting just a timeline on the repairs, but I haven't heard anything. And then sixth in the month, we do have the survey, we're just about wrapped up there. And then we're putting together a preliminary plan for Craig that will actually go through and review the, the approach on that. Wastewater feasibility facility plan will be updated and we'll put that together for that January 1st submitted to the DNR. And then community development and downtown plan, Amy can recover most of that. I keep wanting to say, it was 80 people that stopped?
Exactly.
Yeah, so that was a great turnout, gave a ton of input, just on, had a lot of boards and, and most of you guys participated. There was just a lot of feedback, which was great to hear from folks on what they thought and what they want to see moving forward. So a lot of this is the gathering that and really compiling all that information to really make decisions moving forward. So in a really good spot for that moving forward. Any questions that you've got to me?
All right. Thanks, David. Craig?
Just a couple updates in my report. With the trees, we have some elderly people in town that are having some issues that are, you know, as far as trimming. I'm currently working with the Boy Scouts as a community project to help trim those trees. And it sounds like that's going to go through. So we'll be funneling them. People that are capable of trimming those trees, I'll take all the calls and I'll funnel them back to scouts if they don't get overwhelmed with just anybody calling. So I'll be funneling that. Meters, we are actually down to about 375 at this time. So we are making a little more headway this last week. We got about 80-some in here this last week. So we can, about five days actually, so. Then the only other thing on my agenda is, I did get a quote for a plow. And this is if we had ordered at this time the price on it. We have 14,300 in the budget, because I did fluctuate that number because of COVID inflation and everything like that. Just make sure we're covered. The actual price is going to come in at 11,308. And that's hooked up, complete turnkey with it. So we did have dropped the, he had skid, some skid shoes on it, the quote I got before this, and we don't use them. So he dropped them off and they're 575 bucks. So dropped down a little bit more. It's about 10 weeks out. So I was hoping to get a motion to go ahead and get this ordered. So we'll have it in January.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion and order the plow.
Any discussion?
That's for one of the option trucks, Craig?
Yeah, so one, one we just bought with Sterling's. Yep. So we'll get rid of, we'll have, everything will have two-way plows on now instead of just.
Did you get one from last year?
Yep, yep. We got one last year. Yep. This is the exact same plow and everything. So.
So what are we doing with the one-way plows?
The one we surplused out and we actually gave it to Miller. They were going to try to modify it for a payloader. And then at that same time, we had their old sander that was rusted out. And we surplused that out and that went to Hand County, the county there. So they had their sander go down on them and they were struggling to get something to work. So we're going to piece it together, weld it up, and get by for a year with it. So.
That's also in Miller.
Yep. Yeah, I know the streets who pretend they're pretty well, so that's why.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Not will vote. Brennan?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hair?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
That's all I got. Unless somebody has any questions for me.
All right. Thanks, Craig.
Thank you.
Karen, anything on yours you want to add? All right. Any questions for Karen? None. Teresa, anything to add on yours?
Yeah, my report, just, just a couple of things I want to point out. The industrial sewer project that we have for next year going up Western Avenue, the plans are all put together. We'll probably be coming to you at your next meeting and talking about bidding that project out possibly. So some of the things that will be ready for that. So we'll look for maybe that to be, if not on the next agenda, the following one to talk about bidding that project. And just to let you know, me and Nate, the city administrator in Lenox, are going to hold interviews tomorrow night and Thursday night. We're doing three candidates tomorrow night, three on Thursday for the full-time bill inspector and court enforcer positions. So we'll see what comes out of those interviews and see if we have a recommendation for the council or not. But we have, like I said, we have six candidates we're going to interview and go through and look at that. Insurance quotes, we are going to have those ready for you for your next meeting as well. I asked them to get them to me by the 10th. So they just can have it on their next agenda. Because basically, the current insurance agency, we need to let them know by December 1st if we plan to stay on or not. So we want to review those quotes at that time. So that'll be on your next agenda as well. The other thing, I'm getting quite a few calls about cannabis. I have not received, though, any applications for any kind of establishment at this time. But a few says they are working on them to get them in. So we'll see how that goes. Thought all of them have any questions for me?
Any ideas for Teresa? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to new business. First up, Jesse Foundert, president and CEO of Sioux Metro Growth Alliance.
Good evening, council, staff, public. Thanks for letting me speak to you tonight. Thank you to staff creating the presentation up and running too. I appreciate that. And it's worth it, which is amazing. That's really cool. Hey, Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, we are your regional economic development group, your regional economic development group. One of our things we're working to improve on is our communication strategy to our members, which you are one of the founding ones, going back to the 90s. We want to come in to you at least twice, twice a year, give you kind of a public presentation as to what that we're doing. Take any questions you might have. Answer. answer any concerns that I'll talk or working on for the next year. So kind of a brief refresher here. Our mission is to sustain, and support the economic growth of the communities, businesses, and stakeholders of the metro area. Our vision is, we're going to work with you to create a strong and prosperous metro. And our eyes in metro is Alinyak, Minn., Hala, Kuk, and Turrant Counties. And we serve many of those communities, the exception of Sioux Falls. We do not work for the city of Sioux Falls, we work for the municipalities around Sioux Falls. We are a merger between Lakina and Makita, which has been around since the 90s. Supported by a variety of institutions, we serve those communities there. Pretty much every town in Minnehaha and Minney County, the exception of a couple. And we're really excited to announce that same when we join the membership, starting in January 2022. Housing is a huge thing across the region. We think there's a lot of opportunity to the west long-term. Did I speak too soon? It'd be really funny if I did. I always speak too soon. Yeah, I do. That's so funny.
What'd you do?
You used the arrow to the right.
I know I did.
We had it working earlier.
Maybe that's the pages we deleted.
Yeah, we, it makes a lot of sense for it to go faster. So I'm going to pull the presentation in my phone here just to kind of go through it as we're talking. But the, the cool thing with technology is that you can tell it to not work all the time. And here's one of those examples. So I just wanted maybe highlight that. Thank you. I appreciate it. So we focus on primarily two items for our members, and those are growth and engagement. So growth is kind of what we can measure. These are the, these are the things that people want to see, right? New businesses, new jobs, build new permits, sales tax dollars that come up. And housing events, right? You want to see your population increase. And that's what we can measure from the growth standpoint. These are, these are pretty easy to see. And economic development, we have to take credit for all the good things that are happening to our communities in the region. But the bad things are out of our control. It's the national economy, it's global trade, we can't control it. I say that tongue-in-cheek, but a lot of it, a lot of it happens at local level and is affected on the international level as well. Second pillar is engagement. And this is where we talk about our marketing, our staff support program, our economic education program, community development, and public policy. And these, this is a much harder area, just measuring success, but it's as important because this set of things helps create the growth side. Because you had to have long-term planning, good engagement, if you want to, if you want to be successful. So membership, what does it mean? So based on population. So we, every 10 years, we re-figure based on the census numbers. We do a CPI adjustment annually to kind of just take into account the growth rate. And we reset that at the 10-year mark. This is a little bit different because of COVID and the census being disrupted. But we send a letter out to all the communities in the summer to budget for 2022. And then we'll make some adjustments as we go, knowing that the numbers that we receive now in September are different than the ones that we forecasted in July. So that will be adjusted. The reason why we're funded by utility companies is because they want to see growth in your communities. And so that's what we tell people. The most important part of our work is what we do for the municipalities. And that's why we get investment from the utility companies and the financial institutions and the other private sector businesses out there. We're also creating a new leadership structure for our organization, the Membership Advisory Board. So annually going forward, we'll be giving you a resolution for you to appoint somebody to serve on our advisory board that meets 10 times a year. This is the board that helps set our policy and programming so that it is centric towards our communities. This person can be your economic development director, your city administrator, city councilperson, a mayor, a judge from up in down the street. And whoever you think best represents your community's interests in the Sioux Metro Board. That board meets on the third Wednesdays. And our plan now is actually to move those, move those meetings back down to the communities. The last three or four years, they've been in downtown Sioux Falls, our office situation. But we think that by moving it back up to the communities, we can expose more of our stakeholders to the work each of our towns are doing to move our communities forward. So stay tuned to that. The Membership Advisory Board, their role is to also appoint our executive board members that's in charge of more of the governance and the financial side and strategic side of the organization. I'm going to point out here that David Doc is also on our executive board and helps with the work that we do there. And Amy Farr is your representative on our advisory board. The chairman of the advisory board also sits on our executive board as another voice for the communities that we serve to ensure that our program meets their needs long-term. The details, all right? We work with you, we work with your special teams. In a way, we're kind of like a gym membership. We're there, we exist. To get the best benefit, you've got to give us a call or go into the gym. So if there's a project you want us to work on or something you want us to chase, let us know. Otherwise, we're reactive. We're ready for prospects to come to us. And we try to do the best to make sure that those prospects fit across the region, hopefully in your community. Which leads us to a company of interest policy and a bit of ethics work that is developed. Our position in the past has been primarily reactive, as I said. We work for you all the time, but only on certain projects when you call on us. We want to be more proactive going forward. But some folks have some concerns that you might be stealing projects from other towns and putting them here. They don't know where our allegiance might lie. End of the day, allegiance lies with you, the community. I'll give you two situations of how this might work. One is the city receives a prospect that you want, you want us to help you work with. In that case, we work only for you to ensure success. Example number two is if we receive a prospect, our job is to get that prospect in the region. So in that case, we work for all the communities. We can't tell business what to do. We can't tell business where to go. We can only provide information and options. End of the day, we want to make sure each of our members is happy with the work that we do. So stealing is not part of our work. It's not a word that we use unless we're stealing businesses from Minnesota. We like using stealing in that sense. So stay, stay tuned on that. Other deliverables, working on a database. We're working to really beef up our content information system. We can have the line order coordination. And communication is one of our, I would say, long-term objectives. We've heard from our members in the past that communication's been an issue from our organization. And so hopefully you get a copy of our quarterly newsletter that goes out. I think staff do a good job of putting it in front of you. We're also be getting this in a digital format. We'll be getting both digital and published in the future so that everybody has a chance to read that and stay up to date. So let's see here. Long-term growth for our organization, we hope to grow our management service. So this is for towns that don't have an economic development person or bring people on board and then contracting hours out to our communities that have a need for that service. It's a cost-effective way for towns that don't have a full-time staff person to have more economic development. Again, our, our policy is not to share leads, right? So if you do bring us a lead, we're not giving it to that person or another town. That's not how that service works. That person works with that town on what they want that person to do. We have projects that, that are fits for multiple communities, they go up to the presidency. With more, with more folks getting a part of our organization, we also see opportunities for growth. In the 2000s, we looked at being part of the Course and Development Park partnership, which created hundreds of jobs in the Brandon area, along with millions of dollars in property that can be taxed by the county and city. We want to find a way to create a similar model that can be easily replicated across the county, both counties. So we're starting to create a committee to look into what that might look like as a partnership program. We're also looking to find a way to create an economic development leadership initiative, where you can take folks from across the region, put them together, and help train them, educate them, empower them in economic development best practices as a value add for our members. Long-term, we also want to find a way to be more vocal on a local and regional level when it comes to legislative policy. So we're working in 2022 to create a task force to have a policy platform that is chosen by our members and helps us dictate where our time is spent from advocating on your behalf. We're also working to finalize our metro mayor's roundtable. So right now, the mayors from our communities meet on a quarterly basis to talk about certain issues. Going forward, we want to create a more formal council that works together to create solutions for problems that play all over communities. And at the end of the day, we work for you. So if you need us to work on a certain project, give me a call, we're going on your behalf to ensure that we're getting the best bang for your buck. Last slide, it's the economy, stupid. What's going on? What's going on in the region? We really see water availability and wastewater availability as being key concerns that our communities need to solve when it comes to attracting more growth. Growth can be both on the talent side and the business side. We're a huge proponent of this regional facility that you're looking into and proposing. We think that the economic development return on this thing will be tenfold what it could be if it was shipped elsewhere. Long-term things that we're seeing in the economy, wages are going up, air prices are going up, costs of cuts are going up, which is all being seen by the consumer. Some keys to long-term success come down to workforce availability and building availability. We receive and feel the number of prospects, looking for space that can be made available in a 90 to 180-day timeframe. Usually these respect buildings that can be built out. I would say about kind of the minimum number that we see that's not being met by the market is about 25,000 square feet, I think about 200,000 square feet. And I think smart partners are ones that build between 25 and 50 and you make it expandable for 100 or 200. Of course, funding is a problem with that. Long-term other issues affecting growth are international forces. Who knows what's going to happen in the next two to three years? It's something that could really affect us on the micro level. And housing demand is increasing, while housing costs are also increasing. So I think there's going to be more of a look at looking regionally for housing solutions. Lastly, not least, to save the date, as you can see on my presentation here, there's key dates for you to consider. February 16th is our SMGA annual meeting. It's going to be at the country cover Sioux Falls. April 12th to 13th is the Grow Smarter 2022 Conference, which will be in Harrisburg. Our goal is to rotate around all the different communities that have space for about 200 people over the next, hopefully forever, in perpetuity if it's successful. May 12th will be the Minnehaha County Bus Tour. The June 29th will be the 8th Annual Gold Shovel Golf Classic. It'll be in Del Rapids, Harper is the host this past year. May of September will be the Nathan County Bus Tour. But then I'll take any questions you have about economic development, our organization, or anything else in between.
So Jesse, I have a question for you.
Yes.
What will you do differently with those that are contracted with you?
Yeah.
Versus someone like me?
So we don't, we don't manage folks that we don't employ. So at the end of the day, when it comes to the folks that are a part of our management service, we manage work that they do. That's, that's the proponent. That's, that's why the service is a good idea. We have a team that works together on creating solutions for problems, which I think long-term, our goal is to grow that service, to have more folks on the team. So in theory, more brains working together is better. At the end of the day, you know, we answer to our communities. So the community wants a certain project that we're supposed to work on and that community is a member in that service, then that, then that service goes to work on that project. If Amy or Harper wants us to do a project, then you and I work on that together. Or you have me work on it on your behalf. So the difference is about 20 hours a week.
I only have a question, but just to comment, I appreciate your, kind of some explanations of the inner workings. Because I think it's important for everyone to know. And just how, how it functioned and what, where your, your boundaries are and those kinds of things.
I know, as a team, we talked about creating an audit process. So when we have a prospect that looks at the region and it doesn't go somewhere, what are we doing with that information? So for example, we were working on a large protein processor that would have been located somewhere in Minnehaha County. It ended up going forward because we didn't have the appropriate water and wastewater to meet the community's concerns and not get Sioux Falls on the processing side. And so to ask the issue then is whether the water issue long-term is a region. And I think if you look at the number, Sioux Falls has a lot of the water in Minnehaha County. And also has a huge chunk of Lewis and Carter water. They have the capacity to do that because of the economy's scale. So one that makes us figure out, work towards figuring out the long-term water situation, solutions for all of our communities. And then second, we know that a lot of the projects that we work on have wastewater concerns and for communities that connect to the city of Sioux Falls, we've had an issue with those projects being moved forward. Give you an example, the city of Brandon, the local EDO director there was working on a project. It was a beef processor, 25, 30-head a day. This would have been sometime early 2020. And we had a good site, the brokers working the deal. The EDO director called the city of Sioux Falls and the city of Sioux Falls said they wouldn't handle the, the fluid. This is, this is 25 to 30-head a day to start, up to 60 after a year or two. This is a $10, $20 million project with a number of good jobs. Good project, I agree. And so we see that as an issue across the region because pond systems typically cannot handle wet industry. And if our communities want to be more, I would say, Evan, if they want to take advantage of value-added add, they need to have their own water wastewater solutions. Or at least a really strong partnership that allows for growth and the ability to be flexible with industry.
So if you're down that down, in your opinion, there's a lot of limitations in going to Sioux Falls.
I think so. You know, if, if your goal is to attract industry to your community, going with the Sioux Falls option will likely not be an asset. Because there's no incentive for that company to go to this community versus that community. But that community already has an economy established. It already has a number of positives in place. Harper is starting from a very different position. And so the same reason why you added rural water, want to be competitive, both for your, your taxpayers, for your businesses. But you don't want to just be a better community long-term. You can't afford to be. Now they're in your school. And so you have to be strategic and you have to think long-term. And sometimes you have to take things into your own hands. But then create, like in this situation possibly, really strong partnerships with your neighbors, your neighboring communities especially, that want to see more development. But also it can become an approach that can replicate it across the state, which I think has its own merits as well.
Anything else for Jesse?
You know, me, I've said been here so many times before, I like the sound of my own voice. So we can do this all night.
Sounds like you've had a long day though.
I have had a long day.
You've had a lot of talk.
So thanks for membership, thanks for your time. I'm easy to find, especially the folks in Hartford. Thank you.
All right, last under new business. We're going to discuss the field layout at Swenson Park that we discussed last meeting. Eric Kunsweiler asked to be put on the agenda and we're going to let Eric give his pitch.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So in, in regards to the layout of the Swenson Sports Complex with two new fields, I know we've been down this road many times and the guys are getting tired of hearing about it. I, I know that and so are we. Anyway, with two new fields that are proposed up there, I know we got the FEMA grant, which is, thanks Teresa for putting that in. It's a, that's a big grant for the complex up there. And with the sewer going up there, I know it's, that's logical to have two fields done, right? At the same time. In the meantime, I heard baseball was having, they were breaking away from Humboldt a little bit there with the new group, which is fine, things happen, coming to, coming to Hartford. And to be honest, I had been in contact with those guys, welcoming them to utilize the field. They have this is right, just as much rights to use the field as softball does. I mean, we understand that as a group, so. We wanted to work together with them. We met with them on the side and we had an agreement that those fields can be multi-use, multi-purpose use of that Swenson's complex. Excuse me. So before the meeting, your last meeting, I had been in contact with Ron Uli, who was in charge of bringing a plan here to the council. This council knows that we've tried to have baseball at the table for many years without any success. And I find it a little bit concerning that in one meeting they got done what we couldn't get done in 10 years. And, you know, talking to Ron after that meeting, actually the day of the meeting, I asked him if he was coming here to have those fields as multi-purpose. And he said yes. I didn't come to the meeting at a birthday party that night. I wish I would have been here. It was decided that, based on materials only, it wasn't decided per motion or anything that those fields would be a baseball field and a multi-purpose. But per the materials that were bid, it's going to be more a multi-purpose field, one baseball field. My concern with that is that it's twofold for us with the Hartford Area Softball Association, which I have Brad and BJ here as part of that association too. Number one, if, if it's going to be a baseball field and a multi-purpose field, there will never be a softball tournament in Hartford. And if you're okay with that, we're okay with that. I mean, it is what it is. We will support any decision you guys make at the end of the day. We will support any decision you guys make at the end of the day. The downside to that is baseball, softball runs a little bit different than baseball in that it's easy to bring in a thirty-two team tournament on four fields, a fourplex, in a weekend, a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Thirty-two teams, three-hundred-and-fifty players on a weekend, and the, the economic impact of that to the city of Hartford would be huge. And I could see that happening multiple times a year. I understand there's not a baseball field in Hartford, we understand that, and the council made that clear, that we don't have a baseball field in Hartford, and we need one. We also don't have a softball field in Hartford. We have six multi-purpose fields in Hartford. So, what we are proposing is to keep the multi-purpose concept in place, which has been the plan from day one, as far as I was concerned, until the last meeting. Having a multi-purpose field, two multi-purpose fields, the new ones built, would allow tournaments to happen for softball and baseball. All four fields are usable for baseball as well. Twelve U and younger age can use all four fields. If it's a baseball-only field, the only people that can use that field are baseball players fourteen and over on the one field. So let's keep that all in perspective. Without getting into all the background information, then we're gonna propose a solution tonight, and I've talked to the baseball guys, we buried the hatchet, I like the guys, we get along well. At the end of the day, it's for the youth of Hartford, it's for the baseball players, it's for the softball players, and we talked about one of the fields getting turfed. And right now, there's a project that just got finished in Humboldt, a baseball field, and as he was finishing it, a couple, a couple weeks ago, I went out, Brad and I went out and met with him, and just kind of asked him a bunch of questions on what, what it entails, cost, and he got a, a, in your packets is the projected cost to turf a field. And there's two options there, one is to turf the infield of the grass sides, you know, in front of the dugout, and then another option is to turf the entire infield. I talked to a council member, and we thought there might be another couple hundred thousand earmarked for the fields, maybe in next year's budget.
Not earmarked for fields, they're earmarked for the park.
For the project.
Okay. For the park board, which is not only the sports complex, but the bike trail, the pool, we've got the new park board going.
Gotcha. So that may be an option, maybe it's not. There's other ways to raise money if we need to. Softball Association is a Bible one, C three, we're more than willing to take on that if we need to. In your packets, if you look at the cost of a turfing a field, it's a feasible project, and if we're going to do it, it needs to happen now. It doesn't make sense to go back and do it later. In fact, if it's a grass infield, it will never happen, we all know that, it's going to stay grass infield. So, I guess at the end of the day, you have the information in front of you, you know, there's gonna be material saved if you went with a turf infield, you're gonna save on agri line. There's an option in those bids for the city to do some of the work, pulling out the dirt that's up there, laying, uh...
Geotech fabric, I think I see.
Yeah, drainage, putting in crushed rock.
Right.
As the base, and if you did that, you could take, I don't know, thirty, forty thousand off the bid, I know there's gonna be costs in there, but, anyway, for roughly a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, you can turf a field. I've talked to baseball, baseball's on board with it, I, you know. Like Gary, I like facts, and I like to take some time to dig around and find information, so I did that tonight regarding this and the multi-purpose field. And where did that thing go off the rails? Because if you watched the film, you probably saw me waiver on one of our votes last week because it had become not two multi-purpose fields. And so our August seventeenth minutes, Ron Healy's on there as a visitor to discuss approval of possible update to Swenson Park, and Mr. Healy has asked to address the city council on behalf of the Hartford Area Sports and Rec, and specifically asked for two multi-purpose fields. That was in the minutes, recorded on the nine-seven meeting, city council meeting, we approved those minutes. Ron Healy was present to visit with the council about constructing two multi-purpose fields. And that was reiterated a couple of different times in several different meetings, and then we got to our meeting last week, or two weeks ago, and it had become a little bit more specialized. Yeah. So, well, and maybe to talk about that a little more. If you do a grass infield, you, you limit that field to only be able to be used for baseball, fourteen U and older. If there's a grass infield and you have a softball tournament, we're gonna tear up that infield in two games. I mean, that's just the way it is. Younger baseball, I see some baseball folks back here, but I think if you play fourteen and younger on that field, their bases are in further too, so they'll be running through the grass as well. So it's actually a specialized field for fourteen and older kids. We want baseball here. I've got a four-year-old boy that's gonna play baseball, I hope someday. I'm the biggest baseball fan you're gonna find, my Braves are playing in the World Series, my God, I'm here for crying out loud. I'm missing, so.
So I don't, I don't know much about baseball and softball, and the differences and the nuances and all that. If we did multi-purpose fields, am I hearing you say that the, that both fourteen and under in baseball and fourteen and older in baseball could play on those fields?
Baseball could play on any multi-purpose field in Hartford, and that includes the in-town fields.
Okay.
Now, there's an age group limit on that, you know, I, I mean, without getting into specifics, the two new fields that would be built are gonna be built to baseball specifications, so the fences will be at baseball.
Right.
And that's okay with us, because we can go out and purchase temporary fencing for softball and temporary back shots, I mean, it's not a big deal. A win-win situation for everybody would be to do the two fields as proposed, baseball specifications, one field turfed, that would give baseball a showcase field, it would give softball a showcase field, and baseball would actually gain two full baseball-sized fields, knowing they could actually play on all four up there plus one down here for sure.
That's what I was getting at.
Yep.
Eric, are these quotes just for one field, or they both the both?
This is one field, one field being turfed, yep.
Okay.
And the second, second option is basically dugout to dugout.
Yeah, fully turf and then.
Yep. And I'm not even gonna get into sponsorships of this council, because I know that's a sketchy, I don't even know how that would get done, but in Humboldt, there's a local sponsor that put their logo on the field, and they pay a significant amount of money towards the completion of those fields. So, that's always an option. I know we've got local banks that have to use CRA money, you got possibly midco coming in, there's big companies around here that would put their name on the field without even being replaced, but it's whether you guys want to go down that road as well. And we would be willing to help out with that.
Eric, do you clarify this, tell me about what?
Sure.
What's, my name's Heather, I'm from West Central Baseball Association, and one thing I spoke with Eric before the meeting, and I love the fact that you're gonna put baseball fields in, however, I've reached out to the Legion, the VFW, and the West Central School Board, and nobody has said they're going to have a Hartford-only team. We are West Central, we play as West Central. Nobody has committed to playing all games in Hartford. I can tell you, I did all the scheduling in Humboldt last year. We need the little fields. We don't necessarily need a field that is only for fourteen up. We have ten T-ball teams cluster, you know, we utilize Turtle Creek, but, you know, to be able to play more bowling games for these little guys instead of having to join, you know, an outside group, and have four- to six-year-olds driving to play in group instead of playing here is kind of a shame. So by doing a baseball-only field, you're really limiting that, and to, you know, obviously Humboldt just put in a turf field. You don't want to have one community fail so another, you know, community can succeed. We want all these kids to be able to play everywhere, at both, you know, facilities. And we, all four of us are, you know, on the board, and we want to work, we're committed to work with the Hartford Sports and Rec. We will start attending their meetings, making ours, like, to try to bury this hatchet and work together so that all of these fields can be successful for our kids. I mean, seems like a logical thing to do.
And real quick, Eric, Rob Lynn, president of West Central Baseball, I'd like to add that the Healy's don't have anything to do with West Central Baseball, so they cannot speak on our behalf, just to make that clear. In my opinion, having baseball in Hartford to some degree soon is a positive thing, however, at the older age levels, especially high school and Legion, it's totally unnecessary at this point in time, in my opinion. We just spent, I don't know, a quarter million dollars in the last two months between the turf and concrete that was put in, and we have a fourteen-U, sixteen-U field, E, that basically just needs lights right now, and we would have two playable, older kids' fields and men's fields. So, multi-use would be awesome for Hartford, but to do just a baseball field, in my opinion, is just asinine. It does not make any sense to waste that much money right now. Maybe down the road, it would be beneficial, because we could host more tournaments, but right now, I think money spent on a baseball field in Hartford is not necessary.
Baseball-only.
Baseball-only field, yep.
The beauty of this turf field is, if you walked up to it, you would think it's a baseball field. It looks like a baseball field, it will be a showcase baseball field, the only difference is bases would be pegged in a little bit closer for softball. The reason softball can't use a grass field is because you're gonna tear the grass up. Turf field, you can use it. So, it's a simple fix, it's actually, I, I feel feasible based on the numbers we got. And I know it's more money to another project, believe me, I know, but if you're gonna do it, it's gotta happen now. I, there's money that can be saved on materials upfront, or eighty, it's fifty-four dollars a ton for agri line, right?
The figure of it's about eighty-one hundred dollars.
So you're making ten on it. Basically, if you round up like we did earlier. We are willing to help out, and we've always come to this council with a plan, and we've always executed, we've worked well together, we've done a lot of projects, we've done fencing projects, we've done scoreboard projects. I mean, if, if it comes down to getting a sponsor, we need to do that, we're willing to go do that, I know we gotta work around some things on that, but, or the two-hundred thousand, that's for all those other things you mentioned, could be utilized towards that, I mean. Does it make sense to get this council's motion on going back to what the sales pitch was, not the bait and switch? And that was two multi-purpose fields, cut them, agri line them, fence them?
Fence them for baseball.
Fence them for baseball.
D.
That was the pitch.
Right.
And then, and then we got the bait and switch, in my opinion.
Yeah, on the nineteen.
What about lights, just curious? Will that cost figured in at all on either of the fields?
We're trying to figure out how Travis and Electric could sponsor those, but, I don't know if we've got there yet.
You gotta talk to Sioux Falls Electric.
Sounds without lights.
Okay.
Which again, makes it really hard for, like, a men's baseball team to play.
Can't do it.
On a field with no lights.
Right.
Rob?
Yeah, Rob. You made an interesting comment. Healy's don't speak for West Central Baseball or for Hartford Baseball. Did they talk to you at all before they came to us? Did they talk to you at all?
It's worse than a bait and switch.
Okay, that's all I wanna know.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, I just, I was just curious. And probably one of the smarter things that we maybe did was just do this as a consensus, remember?
Yeah.
We did not make a formal vote.
Yeah, and I talked to Legion, VFW, and the school board, and none of them said either that there was going to be a Hartford.
Well, to be fair, they did not propose that there was gonna be a Hartford-only team to us to report.
No, they did not.
Right.
No, they never said all that field.
No, I just.
Never said all that field was gonna be used.
They said that there was, it was over, one of them, Humboldt was overused and they were gonna use them.
Yeah, right, it could be used, yeah.
So also, just if, if they had about that argument that they were gonna have their own Legion team in Hartford and/or high school baseball, whatever, I'm also the director of baseball operations for VFW Baseball in the state of South Dakota, and we recognize a local sanctioning body, the West Central Baseball Association. So if Hartford formed their own Legion team and tried to subsequently do VFW aid, which would be sixteen-U, the VFW would not recognize Hartford Baseball, so they could not find a safe tournament, just to be clear. So, that's, you know, trying to help local baseball, that's, you know, part of VFW Baseball side.
And none of that undermines the fact that, yeah, we do need a baseball field in Hartford, and it's a, there's two of them that could possibly, no matter.
Okay.
Well, this makes sense, though, if they're multi-purpose and you can still use baseball, I mean, baseball seems still playing on now.
And we can do them for, like, a little piece, which is absolutely where they need it.
Yeah, right.
Four, we need it there.
All right. Any other questions?
So, so this mat you're talking about, that just lays out on top of the agri line, or you just put that in, in the jump as a field?
You do the layaway, so there'd be no agri line, it'd say agri line.
It'd just be turf.
It'd be turf.
Green turf and.
Green turf, eight-year-old tee, twelve, fifteen-year life on it.
You know, and, and one other thing, I'm just gonna throw this out there, I'm, I'm probably, I'd probably look at this differently, because I hear, I hear people talking, I mean, words have meanings, and I hear people keep saying the only people that can use this are fourteen-U, sixteen-U, fourteen-under, T-ball. And when I sit here, I'm not thinking about you, I'm not thinking about baseball, I'm thinking about the kids in this town, whether they're on a team or not on a team. So my question is, if eight kids can just go up there and use that field?
Eight kids?
Eight, ten?
Nine, twelve? Whatever, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I believe when they schedule, they do leave some open times for people to come in and just free using their stuff, when they're, when they're playing hard in the sun.
Because honestly, it seems like when we talk about the sports complex, everybody's got a dog in the hunt. You got a dog in the hunt, you got a dog in the hunt, BJ's got a dog in the hunt, tournaments, T-ball, pickleball, soccer, everybody's got a dog in the hunt. But, the people that nobody talks about is just kids, that aren't, that are not, that are not affiliated with any of this.
And all due respect, I think I, that was my first point. That's who we are. Right away, when the baseball team to the table, we opened up, we've been trying to get them here for eight years, and we opened, freeing them, that's great. Like, we know with more people, it's, you know, the more numbers, the better, hey? We're on the schedule for the city of Hartford, for all the fields, and we live, they're open all day long, all summer, during the day, they're open for anybody that wants to use them. Yeah, you come four o'clock at night, there's practices scheduled, sure. During, you know, during the week, days, we have games, if you're driven by the fields, I mean, they're, they're full every night of the week, there's games every night of the week, on every field.
There's kids that go up there and play baseball all day long, every day.
There's kids that go up there and play baseball all day long, every day during the summer. My son's one of them. They literally go there at 10 o'clock and they, they get off the field once they start prepping the field for the softball field. If they had a turf field to go up north and play, I promise you all those kids would be up there playing on the cool new turf field because that's just how they are. But those fields are literally used every single day.
Well, that's good. People wanna go here to play. Our fields up north are pristine compared to what we play on all summer long. In other communities, including Sherman Park, including our own fields, our fields are played better than any of those fields. They do, and people come and, um, all the time.
And one other point, we are already getting calls and emails from teams around the area that want to come play in Hartford this summer. We ran leagues last year. They wanna come play on our fields. I mean, they're asking, when's this gonna happen? And then the other thing on baseball, in the last two years, I've been doing a lot of the scheduling. We're allowing baseball younger teams to practice. I mean, we put them right into the schedule. You know, if a coach calls us up, we find a field for him to practice. But it's because we have some multi-use fields. So we can just say, yep, this field's open tonight. You can go practice there because it's multi-use.
Which, Brad, we, like, we cannot physically do that in Humboldt. So, I mean, it is amazing to have that.
Fifty percent of us are sitting on this council because of a economic development conundrum. And so that's the point that gets my attention. You know, what, not, not only what's best for the kids, what's best for the community and the multipurpose fields, to me, checks the most boxes.
Yep. And it's not just multipurpose, it's not. Our, our point with that is if it goes baseball, we'll never have a tournament here. And that would be a shame. Because the need is there. People would, we would have more flex, we would host a national tournament this, uh, last year, so go here.
See, just to play devil's advocate though, because you say if, if one of them's a baseball field, we'll never have a tournament. But I think we've already had a tournament there.
Uh, small scale.
Right. The logistics to run three fields versus, it just throws everything out of whack.
But, but I mean, three fields, we could still have a tournament. We just couldn't have a 32-game tournament.
They didn't have a 18-team tournament.
But you could still have a tournament.
Small scale.
Yep.
You could.
Yep. We tried running a tournament on the, on the two fields plus one down here. Didn't work. Logistical nightmare.
You just have a better tournament, four.
Yep.
Yeah. And you'd, you'd fill it.
Yeah.
So, we, we clearly don't have money in the budget for turf and, and maybe some stuff you remarked for the park board that could be spent, however, they've got to see fit. But, let's try and make some rubber hit the road tonight. Do we need a motion to direct these, the multipurpose fields? Is that, is that maybe the most, I mean, it's a lose or die, I don't give a who, they just wanna make a motion. But that's what we, that's the, that's the direction you're looking for, Craig?
I would like to see a motion on what we're gonna do with those fields and then. I got an angle, I'm already, one load already dropped off, they're bringing more this week.
All right. I'm just putting my two cents in on that then. We've already decided what we're gonna do. Okay? Right, Craig?
Last week, uh, two weeks ago, yeah.
Okay. So, if we decide to reverse course tonight, are we gonna be having the same conversation with the other people that were here the last meeting and that aren't here at this meeting? And are we gonna be bouncing back and forth all winter? Or are we gonna do something to stick to it?
It was actually not the whole motion that we voted on at the last meeting. We just had a consensus of what we were looking to do and what we said is in our consensus.
That accepted.
I said the motion was to accept, wait.
Right. Different than what we said, when we said our consensus was that we would do one multipurpose, one for baseball. We did not vote on it. A motion was not given.
So when, when those bids, when we approved, we letting those bids.
Big quantities so we can add.
We didn't realize that the bid quantities were for one multipurpose, one baseball.
Okay.
That came to light last week, last, our last meeting. And then that's where the meeting minutes leading all the way up to that point don't reflect the sales pitch.
But what you're wondering is, are we gonna keep bouncing back and forth? I would say if we get a motion and we get a vote and we get it in the minutes, that's going to, uh,
take forward.
I would say that will stay before.
Yeah, forget, if you're just outside, considering.
Are we gonna be able to afford the different turf? So do you wanna go down the road of multipurpose like everyone else up here? Or do you wanna try going down with Eric's proposal of the artificial turf? We got 25K there, there, and there, so that's almost there.
That's half.
But we've got some folks from baseball here that maybe represent a more diverse group of baseball players that say, we don't need that, not yet. That'd be nice, but it's not necessary. I mean, did I hear that correctly or did I just?
Yeah, in my opinion.
In fact, we are working on, do, um, bring grants to improve our other large field in Humboldt. So that it can be used more than just for 14s in practice, so that we can have games for 14U, 16U, you know, on that field as well, which would then decrease the need. And you know, a lot of, if you're familiar with it, Field A, which is the field that was turfed, you have to somewhat limit the play on it so that you have time for your grass to grow. I mean, it got used almost every single night. Well, now that you don't have to do that, you don't have to cancel games.
It's meaningless, it's meaningless, what she's trying to say.
You know, we're gonna be able to use a lot more too.
So far under budgeted that, did those bid lets come in at?
It was over budgeted.
It was over.
We didn't have money budgeted for it.
Okay.
We had no mu, yeah, I was, they decided to do it, we had no budget.
If we, to play devil's advocate, or if we perceive with what our current plan was or kind of what our consensus was coming out of our last meeting, who would utilize that baseball field in 2022?
Which one?
The, the one that would be sitting out here at Swanson Park.
That's what I, after talking to the Legion, the VFW.
So the Legion, the VFW, that's what I keep hearing. It's like, who's gonna use it?
I don't know, and especially without lights.
Right, right.
I, that's why I hate to see it be baseball-only because I asked that same question of, who's using it?
Right, okay.
My guess is, is it would be high school baseball only, which currently the West Central Baseball Association does not control high school baseball. Sure, and it's unsanctioned, obviously, by the state.
Right.
So, it might be six games at best because the cert, the individuals that gave this pitch are the coaches for the high school baseball team. So, and I don't know what their involvement is with renovating teams such as the Cyclones and the SWAT. But my guess is that perhaps what Brian was saying was, I mean, was it softball or baseball that was interested in coming out here?
Softball.
Okay, so not baseball. But that would be, maybe they're having their tool trying to sell it was they could farm off the field in Hartford to other organizations. I don't know. So.
Motion? Motion to approve additional agro lime purchase and cutting, uh, of two multipurpose fields.
Cutting meaning design?
Well, the, the, they're gonna cut more turf problems. Yeah, then which will take more agro lime. So I think you tried to kill both of those forms of motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right, any discussion?
People said, I guess I would like the turf by you better just because of the, I mean, I know Thunder, we have to figure it out, but just for the fact that it is one of the championship baseball. I grew up in Colton where they have an agro lime infield and as you grow older, those suck way out.
And just for the record, that's what, uh, softball is.
No, 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 yeah.
Opposing to an, for that fact, baseball should have a turf field.
Yeah. No, and that's, yeah, that's kind of where I sit on it, I guess, so.
If, if. Baseball that was invented hundreds of years ago should.
It's a lot nicer now than.
I mean, but it won't be too, you know. Okay, all right. Well, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify, like, this council is or is not on board with this. And your point, then if we're not on board with this, then how are we on board with that?
I would be more on board with the turf just because it suits everybody's need, I guess, in that picture.
And then the question is, where's the, where, where do those funds come from?
Right.
So do you use any of that agro lime, Craig? Have you turfed?
I'm just reading about, no, it looks to me like you'd end up taking it all out because you'd have.
What's the question?
Because you'd have drains in there.
Would you send agro lime on that turf?
No. No, we just. None. So, like, the original bid, like, if we didn't do all the pre-work over in Humboldt on Field A, was like two and a quarter. So we did like, we tore all the sod out, all the agro lime, did all the drain, crushed concrete, rolled the fabric out, got it all ready for the turf company, and we saved ourselves like 75, 80 grand. So I'm just telling you, it's, it's two and a quarter if you do 60, 90, like, a full men-sized field, which is what you would wanna do to have baseball down the road. And that's, we don't have turf in between the foul lines and the dugout. It's still grass. So we just said like the walk-ups and the coaches' socks, and then the infield. So.
We're probably looking about 250 then to.
I would say, you know, COVID, who knows?
Yeah.
If we did what Humboldt did, the exact project, it's 166. Craig and his group could do some of the work, and you can take out 25, 26 grand.
Oh, it's not the two.
Plus the cost of.
All the way to dugout to dugout.
Doggone to doggone, yeah. I'm sorry, it's two.
That's the two, the 233 is dugout to dugout. And even if the, the city staff who doesn't have time for this, I'm assuming, did, we'd take another, same 60, 70,000 out of the 233, so would be in that 170, maybe.
So Craig, do we have to decide on the turf tonight, or you just tell the guy not to haul so much agro lime, or what do we do there?
Can we ask?
I mean, if.
Which field, uh, have you cut the sod?
We haven't done anything because we told these guys to be on hold until we figure out what we're doing.
Okay. At this point, we're just hauling in some agro lime.
Yeah. And I was, I guess if we were to do, I was thinking about doing the south field as a baseball field. That's what I was looking at doing out there.
Okay, is that okay with everybody? Well.
I didn't ask.
Theresa's.
I'm saying.
Would the holding ditch there, wouldn't it make sense to be the north field, Craig? Wouldn't you drain that into that ditch down there? Or is there one to the south?
There's one to the south.
There is, okay.
Yeah, there's drain.
Yeah, they're, okay.
I guess if we're gonna spend this kind of money on turf, then yeah, it's gonna have to, you know, decide which one we're gonna do, if we're gonna do it, because that one's gonna be dug out more.
Would the city entertain allowing the softball and West Central Baseball Association the opportunity to help raise funds to pay for it, uh, to be turned?
Absolutely. I mean, speaking for myself.
And if that included putting holes on the turf? You can have that included front money to just get it done now and?
Yeah, we've got an advertising, uh, policy that we wrote for the fence. Uh, advertising, did I think that same? Yep, that same policy could be applied to the turf.
So, like, we were just talking, if we leave that agro lime out there, it's saving $100.
Right.
If we spend the full money, we're looking at adding 16,000 to it, to the project, to do them both as general purpose. We can always take that agro lime off in fields and salvage a lot of it and use it for the other field just to build them back up. Wait, because if they don't raise money for a year, you got a field down for another year and have a tournament. Let's get them done for multipurpose, in my opinion.
Yep.
Set them up. You guys get the money raised, or whatever, a year, two years from now, salvage it, dig it out, put it in another field.
Well, 16, is that really the big number you said? 8100?
It's gonna cost, it's gonna cost, uh, 16,000 more to get, to bring your own agro lime in.
Yeah.
And you'll have two fields ready for the spring. If you don't do it, you're not gonna have, you're not gonna have a field in the spring.
Well, I can't speak on behalf of the city, but we probably have 30 tons set in Humboldt right now that we just field off. So.
So one more, yeah, one and a half partial.
So, that's something to consider. I could possibly look into that or somebody else on board.
All right, I mean, so, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
So what's our motion?
Keel made the motion to approve additional agro lime purchase and the cutting cost for two more multi, for two multipurpose fields.
All right.
Any more discussion?
I don't have to have you discuss this again unless it's for a turf.
So, your motion.
I mean, I'm serious. Next meeting, if there's a person who wants to grant.
That they're talking.
No turf, no turf.
No turf.
I'm not, it gets Hartford treating more fields.
I talked to these guys, I buried the hatchet. They're on board with, with it in the fields.
That's a, right.
Ask them what we just, the motion was, what, what the, uh, you know, looking at turf in the future.
They don't have it now.
Just saying, that's all I, because I don't wanna keep going back and forth.
Hey.
And I think it's for, for the better that we can do both, but I wanna make sure they have baseball and they don't get cut out either.
Right.
And that's what we want to do.
All right. We're good? No other discussion? Well, okay, go ahead.
So, with that motion, we can put the turf in.
At some point.
At some point.
So we can still pursue it and get the funds there, we can do the turf.
We can move forward on trying to raise funds for a future date to eventually turf it.
Right.
But for right now, it's going to be agro lime infield, all multipurpose fields.
Right.
Yep. The only thing, uh, deep fences.
Yep, right.
Okay, we know that.
Pen furs, yeah.
And baseball. 60, 90 deep fences, we know that. All right? Anything else? Come on.
I'm good.
There's a baseball game on.
Yeah, it's probably gonna be happening on the TV. We would have gotten.
All right?
The TV don't work.
Nothing else? Well, phone. Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yep.
Montier?
Yeah.
And I'll be a yes.
We're gonna go tear the grass fields out tomorrow so that there's no change in your.
Don't the agro lime?
I was gonna call you tomorrow.
When I drive home past the shop, I'll hear the payloader fire up. That'd be good. All right. We have anything to move into executive session for?
Um, everything.
Identity and a motion to adjourn?
So move on. Take it.
All in favor?
All right.